All right. Good evening, everybody. We're going to call to order the Tuesday, October 19th meeting of the Corder Madera Town Council. And the first item on tonight's agenda is a closed session item. The topic is conference with legal counsel on existing litigation. We'll start by taking public comments on this item. And seeing no members of the public present, we will close public comment. The council is now going to adjourn to closed session and we're going to return to this open session at 6:30 and we will report out on any reportable action that we've taken and then proceed with the open portion of tonight's meeting. So we will see you at 6:30. Thank you. All right. If everybody's set, we're going to call to order the open portion of the Tuesday, October 19th meeting of the Corder Madera Town Council. Rebecca, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Lee?
Here.
Councilmember Monken?
Here.
Councilmember Azia?
Here.
Vice Marcus Sisa?
Here.
Mayor Beckman?
Here. Thank you very much. Please join me in the salute to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everybody. The council is going to report out of our closed session that we just had. The topic was conference with legal counsel on existing litigation and the council has taken no reportable action. Amy, do I call for public comment on that again before we move on to open time?
No.
No, okay, great.
We took the public comment earlier. We're fine. Yeah.
Great. Thank you. So again, no reportable action, which brings us to item two on tonight's agenda, open time for public comment. This is an opportunity for any members of the public to comment on any items that are not on tonight's agenda. And any members of the public who would like to be do so will be given three minutes apiece. So if you're on the line with us here and you'd like to comment on anything not on tonight's agenda, please go ahead and raise your hand via Zoom or email publiccomment@tcml.org. And we'll ask Rebecca if we got any emailed public comments for open time.
Thank you, Mayor Beckman. We did receive a public comment email that I believe is meant for open time. It was sent to publiccomment@tcml.org and it says, "Hello, councilmembers. I'm disappointed that the community center is closed and that the plans are for it to stay that way through the end of the year. As a long timer in resident, I'd hope to rent it out for a community event, which would be perfect. Facilities in other cities are now reopened. Can we not find a way to reopen the community center by November? Thank you for considering this." Doug Wilson.
Great. Thank you very much, Rebecca. Thank you to the commenter. I'm not seeing any hands up from folks on the line. Oh, a hand has just gone up. It is Phyllis. So we'll bring her on right now.
Good evening. I just wanted to share with you that I did send an email to Todd Cusamano and copied the rest of you, asking to have an item put on a future agenda under the Council Rules and Procedures, Section 7. And my request is for Corder Madera to make the following changes under Title II Administration and Personnel, Chapter 2.04 Town Council of its municipal code 1, add a new section 2.41 as respects local elections required campaign contribution limits to establish its own stricter and more appropriate required campaign limits from a single donor than the state default limit of $4,900. And 2, to update Section 2.242.010 expenditure ceiling, et cetera, subsection C by eliminating the final phrase, as the code has been repealed. And I hope that the council will put it on a future agenda and I'll be glad to discuss it with you at this time. I did send all of you background material of my research and I am available. My cell phone number was there and after the election next Tuesday, because I'm doing some out of state work, you're welcome to call me and I'll answer some questions.
Great. Thank you very much, Phyllis. And I am not seeing any other hands up. So with that, we will close open time and move on to item three on our agenda, which is our presentation for tonight. It's a fair housing presentation provided by Lili Thomas of the County of Marin. And if we can bring Lili over.
Lili and Liz Darby are being transferred over.
Perfect.
Good evening.
I didn't mention Liz Darby. Sorry about that, Liz. This is, we're also going to be hearing from Liz Darby with Marin County Social Equity Programs.
Thank you. Good morning or good evening, councilmembers. I'm Lili Thomas with the Marin County Community Development Agency, joined here with Liz Darby, who also works at the Community Development Agency with us. And we're here to give you an update on some fair housing and equity work that we're doing and how that kind of relates to your upcoming housing element process. So Liz will start with her presentation and then I'll add a few things at the end and we'll be available to answer questions.
Thank you, everybody. Good evening. Thank you for having us. I'm very excited to be here, Rebecca. I am technologically challenged, but can I share my screen?
Yes, you should be able to.
Okay, let's hope I pull up the right one and not embarrass myself a lot.
And if not, I can make you a co-host and then you definitely will be able to.
Can we see that?
There you go.
Okay. Let me start from the beginning. So again, this evening, a good evening. This evening, we're going to be talking about the Marin County Restrictive Covenants Project as well as AB 686, which is part of a housing element which we refer to as affirmatively furthering thorough housing. On the Marin County Restrictive Covenants Project allows homeowners to identify any illegal or unlawful restrictive covenants in their property deeds, to affirmatively further their housing laws, and to assert that such covenants are illegal and inconsistent with counties' commitment to racial equity for potential homebuyers. A covenant is a legally enforceable contract imposed in a deed upon the buyer of a property. Racially restrictive covenants refer to legal agreements that prohibit the purchase, lease, or occupation of a piece of property by a particular group of people and that prohibit the homeowner from selling or renting to anybody of a specific race or ethnic background. The racially restrictive covenants project was created to educate and inform Marin County residents and homeowners of the history and significance of discriminatory government policies and programs that created segregated communities even here in Marin. The project recognizes that restrictive covenants continue to be in property deeds today and provide property owners with an opportunity to proactively make a change to their existing deeds while acknowledging and recognizing that they are illegal and inconsistent with Marin County values. And while restrictive covenants were used throughout the country, it also has a very local history here in Marin. Until the start of World War II, there were very few African Americans living in Martin County. Then in 1942, Marinship was created and workers were recruited to work at the 24/7 operation. A new community called Marin City was created to house some of the workers. And at its peak, there were 22,000 workers working at Marinship and 6,500 of those workers and families lived in Marin City. Eighty-five percent of them were whites, 10% were southern blacks, and five were Chinese immigrants. Marin City was considered one of the most diverse, racially integrated communities throughout the country. At the end of the war, military veterans returned in droves and there was a housing shortage across the country. Under the National Housing Act, the federal housing authority guaranteed bank loans to developers to increase housing across the country with one condition. Those homes that were developed could only be sold to white people. White veterans and their families returning from World War II were able to purchase homes with mortgages that were guaranteed by the federal government. Many homes in Marin in the late 1940s were selling for about $7,000 to $8,000. And in some cases, the monthly cost to purchase a home was less than what a family would have to pay to rent in public housing. The FHA also created a color-coded system primarily based on race to determine financial investments in a community. Color coding could determine whether your community received mortgage capital, financing for roads or sidewalks, schools, banks, and grocery stores, or whether your community would be locked in concentrated poverty. Neighborhoods outlined in green were considered the most desirable. Neighborhoods outlined in red were considered hazardous. And although federal laws prohibit overt discrimination in housing today, the forces that drove residential segregation have persisted in many subtle ways. These include single-family and exclusionary zoning policies, placing affordable housing in only low-resourced neighborhoods, while failing to construct affordable housing in high-resourced areas and neighborhoods which are primarily white. In fact, 2/3 of the redlined neighborhoods that were deemed hazardous in 1939 are still inhabited by mostly black and Latinx residents. Racially restrictive covenants are part of Marin County's history, and they were an effective way to segregate neighborhoods and stabilize property values of white families. And the long-term effects of those discriminatory policies continue to impact our communities of color even today. As I mentioned, homes purchased in Marin in the 1940s could be bought for $7,000 to $8,000, often with no down payments. According to the county's Assessor Recorder's Office, the median-priced home in Marin for September and August was $1.7 million. The equity accumulated in those homes has enabled white families to pay for their college educations and for the college educations of their children. They've had the ability to fund their retirement, buy second homes and homes for their children, and they are able to bestow inheritance and create generational wealth. Through the county assessor recorder's office, residents are able to certify and affirm that any illegal and racially restricted covenants in their deeds are unconstitutional and violate current laws and county values. Residents who own homes built before 1970 are encouraged to check their covenants, conditions, and restrictions mentioned in their real estate documents to see if discriminatory language exists. If found, property owners can have a chance to file a public statement protesting the offensive passages by filing a restrictive covenant modification. And if homeowners choose not to submit a modification but wish to acknowledge to potential homebuyers that illegal language exists in their deeds, and again, that such language is illegal and inconsistent with our values, they can do so by submitting the language to the Community Development Agency that will provide certification that the language in their existing property deed is illegal. Since May, we've received a number of responses from residents who want to learn more about the program and want to participate by sharing their stories about how restrictive covenants have affected their lives. Our website allows people to learn about the project, allows you to submit deeds for modification, and provides a wide range of resources where people can learn about restrictive covenants. At the end of the project, we're hoping to show a mapping of the areas in the county that have restrictive covenants in their deeds, which will create Marin County's first redlined mapping. We're currently working with some of our homeowners associations to engage residents in their communities, and we are working with the Marin County Office of Education to introduce this project into our schools. As we begin our community conversations about the housing element and the requirement to identify sites where housing can be developed, the Restrictive Covenant Project provides some context about why we are all required to address historic and discriminatory housing policies while also informing residents about existing segregated communities. So now I'd like to address California Assembly Bill 8686, which we often refer to as the affirmatively furthering fair housing. Many people confuse fair housing with affordable housing. And while they have much in common, fair housing are actually a set of laws. In fact, they're civil rights laws. Civil rights laws guarantee the rights of individuals to receive equal treatment and prohibits discrimination in a number of settings, one of which is in housing. Under Title VII of the Civil Rights Act of 1968, it is illegal to prohibit or discriminate in the sale of rental or financing of housing or housing-related transactions based on race, color, national origin, religion, sex, disability, or marital or familial status. As we previously mentioned, racially restricted covenants, which were legal, were widely used to prevent people from purchasing or renting homes. In addition, under California law, we have expanded the federal definition of populations to include additional members of the protected classes. And fair housing isn't limited to not discriminating against certain population. It also means ensuring that all people have actual choice in where they choose to live. It's actual choice, which means the existence of realistic housing options. It's protected choice, which means housing that can be accessed without discrimination, and enabled choice, which means realistic access to sufficient information regarding options so that any choice is informed. So what is affirmatively furthering fair housing? Generally, it's having specific goals and a commitment to promote inclusive communities, further housing choice, address racially and economic disparities through government programs, policies, and operations, and it applies to all public agencies in all activities related to housing and community development. So basically, AB 686 requires all jurisdictions to do community outreach and engagement, to perform an assessment of fair housing practices, to do an analysis of sites for housing at all income levels, to identify communities of high and low resource areas, and to create concrete and specific actions that affirmatively further fair housing. Community engagement is essential to efforting the housing element, and each jurisdiction is responsible for affirmatively furthering fair housing. We must do so often, early and ongoingly. And most importantly, we must reach and do outreach to all economic segments of our populations. As part of our outreach, we must ensure that translation services are available. And I think that in Corder Madera, that would be both English and Spanish. You should include community-based organizations in your area or CBOs that some of your residents either engage with or participate. And all communication should be easy to understand by all residents and should not include a lot of government jargon or acronyms, which I always say the county does all the time.
Hey, Liz, I'm so sorry. What are CBOs?
I'm sorry, community-based organizations. Sorry.
Thank you.
Sure. So jurisdictions, as we do our outreach, must consider how we engage our residents. We should have meetings that are close to transit. Our meetings should be like this one is held outside of work hours so people can actually participate in the evenings or the weekends. We should consider both in-person and electronic options for participation. And we should ensure that the housing element draft is made well in advance of the time we actually submit to the Department of Housing and Community Development. Some strategies for a community outreach could include creating focus groups, which provides a sample of views, thoughts, and ideas from specific populations. Reach out to your African American, Latinx, Asian, or disabled residents. That can provide you with an opportunity to hear directly from people who often aren't even invited or think they're invited to the table. It allows you to provide translation services and connects you to additional resources for future meetings. You should also consider identifying community leaders, whether they're your HOA representatives or residents who already participate in community activities, and invite them to help you coordinate meetings with their contacts. Also, you should consider your business owners, right, and ask them to engage their employees. And also consider reaching out to those who work in our homes and perform services for our residents, right? They can be very helpful in identifying the challenges of working, living, and commuting to Marin. One of the essential elements of AB 686 is the requirement that all jurisdictions develop an assessment of fair housing. The assessment must consider factors that cause, increase, contribute to, maintain, or perpetuate segregation, racially or ethnically concentrated areas of poverty, significant disparities in access to opportunity, and disproportionate housing needs. The assessment must also include a summary of fair housing issues that inform and help you prioritize your goals and actions. One of the key areas of the assessment is the identification of sites in a manner that affirmatively furthers fair housing. Site identification must assess whether the identified sites serve the purpose of replacing segregated living patterns with truly integrated and balanced living patterns. The analysis should not be limited to identification of sites in just lower-income households, yes, but should incorporate everybody's projected housing development at all income levels. The site inventory should include a review of your current zoning policies to ensure that sites are truly meeting the requirement of affirmatively furthering fair housing. And the housing element should identify sites for housing, including rental housing, factory-built housing, mobile homes, emergency shelters, and shall make adequate provisions that existing and projected needs are met at all income levels. The site inventory accompanying the analysis must also identify the selected sites, map the location of the sites, and indicate the number of projected units for each site. Oops. The housing element requires the identification and prioritization of contributing factors that lead to specific goals and actions. The housing element must include goals, policies, and most specifically, a schedule of actions during the planning period. Actions must be specific with timelines, discrete steps, and measurable outcomes that have a beneficial impact, and must reflect the results of the fair housing analysis, and must address housing needs at all economic levels. There must be a specific commitment to deliverables, measurable metrics, or objectives, definitive deadlines, dates, and benchmarks for implementation. So in sum, AB 686 means we must affirmatively further fair housing, which means we must address the significant disparities in housing needs and in access to opportunities. We must replace segregated living patterns with truly integrated and balanced living patterns. We must transform racially and ethnically concentrated areas of poverty into areas of opportunity, and we must foster and maintain civil rights and fair housing laws. And we must be intentional about replacing segregated communities with truly inclusive opportunities, not some that just benefit some and not others. And finally, affirmatively furthering fair housing really means transforming racially and ethnically concentrated areas into areas of opportunity without the fear of displacement. The county has been working in affirmatively furthering fair housing for the last five years, and we've learned a lot about how to understand and implement the requirements, as well as make really meaningful impacts in our community. And as always, we begin with the data, and we let the data tell the story. Here's a sample of the data that you'll be receiving from the California Department in Housing and Urban Development, which you'll be using to help create your housing element and do your analysis of fair housing. So when we take a look at the trend in Corder Madera, we see that Corder Madera, we see a couple of patterns here, and one of which is Corder Madera actually, over time, has become much more diverse. There has been an increase in the Asian, African American, Latinx, and multiple race populations in the last 10 years, while at the same time, the white population has decreased slightly. That said, Corder Madera continues to be less diverse than Marin County as a whole and the Bay Area in general. Younger populations tend to be more diverse, which creates an opportunity to address housing needs for the future. And as you can see, the vast majority, 56% of your housing stock, is single-family homes. And that hasn't really changed in the last 20 years. While at the same time, the number of new housing that's been created has steadily decreased. Households having more than one or one and a half persons per room are considered overcrowded, and those having more than one and a half people per room are considered severely overcrowded. Clearly renters are significantly more likely to experience overcrowding than our homeowners. While the vast majority of homeowners have three to four bedroom units, renters occupy a variety of sizes, of housing sizes, which may include significant numbers of families. And as we begin our community conversations about who lives in affordable housing developments in Marin, it's really important that we highlight that a family of four in Marin County can earn up to $146,350 a year and qualify for affordable housing. It's extremely important that we identify and clarify who we're really talking about living in affordable housing in our communities. This should help inform residents and challenge existing stereotypes or assumptions about who is and who will be moving into our communities. Now I'd like to draw your attention to the last row here, which is the area median income, and just hold on to that, those numbers there. Oops. Okay. Looking at the area median income, we see that, and this is really interesting, white, black, and Asian households in Corder Madera earn more than 100% of AMI, over 60% in all three categories. And yet, there are no black homeowners who live in Corder Madera. And while the average market rate rent increased in Marin by 91% from 2009 to 2019, the average income increased in Corder Madera by only 43%. And lastly, looking at the housing affordability, according to HUD, affordable housing should not exceed 30% of household income. So that means for a household of one, the monthly housing cost should not be greater than $2,561 a month. For a family of four, it shouldn't exceed $3,659 a month. Taking a look at these local employment figures, all of these Corder Madera residents are spending more than 30% of their household income on housing. And again, I just wanted, this is just sort of a sample of the data that I'm showing you, just to show you how you can do some of your analysis. You'll be receiving from your consultants or from California Housing and Community Development, your data within a lot of different variety forms. So at this point, I'd like to turn it over to my colleague, Lili Thomas.
Thanks, Liz. So I just wanted to highlight to you all that to assist with all of this work that Liz has laid out that we all need to work on, the county has received some funding through ABA, the Association of Bay Area Governments, and we have a contract with Veronica Tam and Associates, who is going to look at the demographics of our communities to help identify areas and populations that may need that special outreach that Liz just talked about. She will also be available to review proposed sites to evaluate them for consistency with the fair housing requirements that we need to do at the state level. And we'll be sending out some data packets and guidance on how to do that affirmative marketing that Liz talked about. And you know, basically, what we want to say that, like, that seems, if this seems like an important but daunting task, there's help and resources that are here to support you. And then we also just felt like it was valuable for us to go and talk to every city council in the county so that everybody is getting kind of shared messages around it and understanding that as we go out to do this work and to work on our housing elements, that there's a new requirement that this fair housing work be woven through every aspect of our housing elements and that we all are kind of starting on the same page with the same shared information. So that concludes our remarks, and then we're happy to answer any questions that you have.
Great. Well, Liz and Lili, thank you both so much for this fantastic presentation and for your incredible work on this. We're going to open now to questions from council members for either you two or staff on this item. I'll just ask you guys if you wouldn't mind to unshare your screen just so I can see our council here, see any hands go up. Perfect. Thank you. So any questions from council members? We'll start with Charles.
Hi, Liz and Lili. Thank you for giving that presentation. Always informative. One of the things that caught my mind on this go-around on the presentation, because I've seen it in other locations and think it's great and informative. When comparing Corder Madera's demographics to an overall Bay Area demographic, you know, we've also seen presentations from Berkeley and other planners, and they point out that like the 29% of Asian population are concentrated in other towns. So ultimately, when we try to think of a diversified community in relationship to the Oval Diversification, the Bay Area, that's a skewed graphic, right? And at least the way I understand it. So I think part of, do you understand how, what, instead of just... do you understand how, what, instead of just comparing contrast, a methodology to really understand what the diverse mix of what is already a diverse overall region, right? Really would look like not just big chunks and say that's what it is, because that's not the realities of Daly City, for example, right? Um, so i- if you could address that a little bit, if, if you've thought about it or had more in-depth conversations about it when we move towards these housing elements, that would be very helpful.
Go ahead, Lili.
I, I was just gonna say, do you want to take this? It's you, the one who's.
What I was gonna say is, you know, and, and, and that's a really good question, Charles, and honestly, we've had to do this AFFH work for years, and it's, it is a requirement to sort of look at things regionally and, you know, and, and very locally, and sort of when you're doing this, it is, it isn't, um, necessarily a comparison directly, as you said, there's a lot of mitigating factors to it, but it's, it's trying to be, I would say, um, aspirational. Right? I mean, we want to make sure that we're moving towards that direction, and you know, your, your demographics frankly look, you know, pretty good in terms of how it's all been diversified. I mean, I'm not gonna say that there's not work to be done, but you know what I mean? I mean, you just, if you look at sort of how diversified Corder Madera is, right, and so that your trend is obviously moving in the right direction. And I don't think that, um, you're necessarily going to be compared to what is going on just in the Bay Area, but even what's going on in other jurisdictions here in Marin County.
Great, thank you, Charles. Do we have any other questions? Lili, uh, excuse me, Leela.
Thanks, um, thanks Liz and Lili, great presentation. Um, I just wanted to say, you know, I appreciate your, the thought you put into this, and obviously, you know, we recognize our policies that we had in the past excluded people, and I think it's really important that we acknowledge those and try to, you know, correct them as best we can. Um, and I also just want to say, you know, for me, I think, you know, increasing the diversity and playing Corder Madera is a benefit. I think we all benefit from having, um, more people from different backgrounds. Um, I did have a question about, um, the restrictive covenant project, um, which I think is great. Um, I, my question was about what sort of support is being provided to help people find that language? I actually looked into this, um, years ago, because the house that I own with my husband has that language in it, and I saw it when we bought the house. And I remember just being floored, you know, at what I was seeing. Um, and, uh, but I didn't, you know, I didn't know I could do anything about it at that point, and then years later, I sort of heard about people challenging this and trying to get them stricken, and I reached out to the county to see how I would do that, and, and basically the response I got was like, well, go find the language and bring it to us, and then we'll help you with it. And I looked through the reams of paper we have for buying our house, and I couldn't find it, and so, you know, I'm just wondering what sort of assistance is provided to homeowners who might need some help navigating that process.
Well, thanks for bringing it up, and thanks for your attempt, and, well, it is complicated, actually, it's a nightmare. Lili actually has her restrictive covenant in her property deed herself, and I tried finding it my own in my own house, and I couldn't, I mean, I just got lost. But the Recorder's Office is really in partnership with us doing this, and we really needed them to, to, to help out. They've got, they can't actually find things, but they, they're starting to help guide people on how to do it. One of the things that I've learned is if you have your title report, that's the best place to start. And if you have a title report, you can actually bring it to the Recorder's Office, and they can help you begin to do the search. Otherwise, it's really complicated, which is why we've given people this other option, right, to say, if you want to, and, and it's not just symbolic, because it's really kind of an educational process, but if you really want this to be certified so that, and we've had at least three cases of people that have come to me and said, um, you know, we chose not to buy a house because we saw it in there, even though it's illegal, that was symbolic to them. So if you wanted sort of that statement to put on property, on top of your property, uh, deed, you can do that just at the community development agency.
Great, thank you so much, Leela. Uh, any other questions from council members? And if not, I just had a couple of questions. So one, just following up on Lila's question, I just wanted to make sure I understand. So is, is there a mechanism for homeowners to actually have racist clauses or restrictions stricken from? Uh, okay, great. So they just work with the, was it the, the county assessor recorder on, on getting that done? Okay, great.
That's, excuse me, mayor, that's the legal way, so you, that will legally, you know, it's a modification to your actual deed, so it'll be recorded. The community development way is not recorded.
Okay, got it.
But I just wanted to also, sorry, to clarify, it, the language stays there, it's just something that's recorded, right, with, on the title, right? Like, it's, it's because it's in the history of the deed, right, but there's language that's attached to it. And Liz, do you want to speak to the state law that's coming down?
The fourteen sixty-six or something like that, which is going to mandate that assessor recorder's office do this work on, and it's not going to be just on racially restricted covenants, it's going to be on all kinds of covenants and that kind of thing. That won't go into effect, I don't believe, until twenty twenty-three at the earliest, but what we're doing with this project is more an educational process, right? So we want people to be together, because we kind of think it would be cool if we had all of these data points, where we could actually begin to see the redlined errors of Marin County, right? Because that's what people have been asking for, and we don't have it, because it wasn't created, so that's part of it.
That's great. So, so just to make sure I understand, so you're saying that the, even once you identify and, and kind of have that language noted as, you know, illegal, unenforceable racist, it still stays in the deed, you can't actually have it removed, is that correct?
A deed modification is what is actually recorded, so I think you're right, Lili, and I, I mean, I, I might be getting into the weeds, and if, I mean, I'm not an attorney on this, but I, I it may be in AB sixteen, fourteen sixty-six, they actually may allow you to deduct it, I think, but I'm not sure. So I, I apologize, let me get back to you on that with a.
No, Charles, did you?
I wanted to ask another question, because I think that ultimately, when I moved in, I also had that restrictive covenant. Um, I have it, and I can, I do want to change it, but, or at least acknowledge that I personally, it doesn't represent what I would want to move into currently. Um, but also, I think it was incredibly enlightening about the history of this area, and, you know, a history that I think hadn't been acknowledged or understood, you know, we all think we're, you know, the Marin hot tubbers or something from the seventies, but there was an even longer trajectory, um, and history that I think it was important for me, my children, and everybody else to kind of realize. Um, so then I think you get into the moral issue of, do you erase history, or do you acknowledge history so that it doesn't repeat itself? And I think that, you know, ultimately, you, you need to ask those questions before you go ahead and just strike it from the record. Um, and, and so, you know, hopefully, I, I, you know, I'm not making that moral judgment myself, but me personally, I, I would leave it so that whoever, uh, takes the house and later, you know, would be aware of, of, um, the history, uh, because I, I needed to know it, and, um, it's helped me a lot navigate different things. Um, particularly, for example, when I went, uh, to an art discussion in Marin City, and they told me about the history from Marin City's side, older, you know, five-generation type, um, people that had grown up there, and how they were the direct recipient on the other side of that. So, um, you know, I just, uh, I, I just asked that question ultimately, Liz and, and Lili, as, as this continues to progress, if there is just a discussion to help people that do want to do the best thing, what, what, how it's determined what that really is for, for furthering the goals of fair housing, so.
I, I, I would just say that there's, you know, the, the program through the Community Development Agency is just attaching something, so it's recognizing it, it's not going away if you went that route. And also, you know, mapping it in a way so that we can look, when we start to, um, get more people who've, who've looked into this, and we've mapped them on our website, I think that that will also tell the story of how these restrictive covenants are, you know, is there a connection between the, where those are and where, you know, only single-family zoning is, and where communities are overwhelmingly white. And so I think that, I think that we'll see some stories that are told, um, as we, as we progress, and, and, you know, there's more people who are, who are working on this.
Thanks, Charles. I just had a couple more questions, and then if there's no other questions, we'll take public comment. So my first question is for, uh, Liz and Lili, and, and I was just, um, just to make sure I understand. So was this presentation tonight primarily informational and raising awareness, or do you see a potential role for cities throughout Marin in supporting this work?
Well, I'll never lose an opportunity to ask for support, and yes, we are. So we're saying, you know, first of all, thank you again for giving us this opportunity. I think it's great that we get to speak to residents of Corder Madera and others, um, on the call. But, you know, if this is something that I could ask, it would be maybe put this on your website, right? Just link us to the county's website, where people can do it on their own, but we can start tracking and seeing whether or not we've got some flow from Corder Madera, that would be great.
Great, thank you. And then my second question is, uh, for Todd, and Todd, I just wanted to check in with you and just confirm, is our housing element outreach and development, that, you know, that whole process we're designing, is that designed to meet the requirements of AB sixty-eight that Liz walked us through in her presentation?
Absolutely, yes.
Perfect, great, thank you. I don't have any other questions. Do we have any other questions from council members? Um, and if not, we'll go ahead and take public comment on this item. So any members of the public who would like to comment, please go ahead and raise your hand via Zoom or email publiccomment@tcmail.org, and we'll bring you on here. Rebecca, did we get any emailed public comments on this item?
Thank you, Rebecca, and I'm refreshing that now. And no, we did not receive any emailed public comments on this item.
Alrighty, thank you, and I'm not seeing any hands up from folks on the line. So we will close public comment and bring it back to the council for any, uh, last discussion points before we let our presenters get back to their Tuesday evening. Any, any parting thoughts from council members? And if not, I, I will just say, again, thank you both so much for, for your incredible work. This is, as you said, it's a daunting task, uh, but it's certainly something that needs to be done, and I really appreciate, uh, I, I think we all appreciate that you guys are doing this and that you came forward uh, to present this to our community tonight, so thank you so much, and we appreciate it.
Thank you all.
Alrighty, thanks Liz, thanks Lili. And, uh, with that, that concludes tonight's presentations and brings us to item four on tonight's agenda, which is our consent calendar. These are items that are routine or have been previously discussed and do not require any further discussion, and any member of the council or public may pull an item from our consent calendar for further discussion. Would any members of the council like to pull a consent calendar item? And seeing none, I'll turn it over to the public. So if any members of the public would like to pull an item from our consent calendar, please go ahead and raise your hand via Zoom or email publiccomment@tcmail.org. And Rebecca, did we get any emailed public comments on any consent calendar items?
Rebecca, no, we did not receive any email public comments.
Great, thank you, and I'm not seeing any hands up from the public, so we'll close public comment and bring the consent calendar back to the council for a motion. Fred?
Yeah, go ahead and make the motion to approve consent items for A two, for E.
Great, thank you. Bob's second, thank you, Bob. And Rebecca?
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Morgan?
Yes.
Councilmember Vazia?
Yes.
Let's mark this, yes. Rebecca.
Yes, thank you very much. That brings us to item five, our public hearings, and our only public hearing of the night is five A, which is a public hearing to consider introduction ordinance number ten-ten, uh, to add section number two-point-four to the Corder Madera Municipal Code, Electronic Filing of Campaign Disclosure Requirements Related to Electronic and Paperless Filing of Fair Political Practices Commission Campaign Disclosure Statements, and I'll turn it over to staff.
Okay, thank you, Rebecca, and sticking ears and grabbing my correct stack of papers now. Um, thank you, Mayor, and members of the council, this is being brought back, um, again, instead of second reading and possible adoption, we are bringing back um, a different version of a similar ordinance that you heard an introduction of at the last meeting, and then asking council to consider taking action to set aside their action at the October fifth meeting to introduce ordinance number one zero zero nine, and consider introduction of ordinance number, um, one zero one zero. This is the ordinance that is, um, uh, housekeeping ordinance that we need to adopt in order to allow our, um, candidates for, uh, council to file electronically their statements of, uh, economic interest that they will file as candidates, and also their, um, I believe it's form four seventy, oh, it's four sixty, the, the campaign committee, um, statements that are filed periodically. Under this ordinance, uh, any candidates filing Form four seventy, which is filed by office holders and candidates who do not have a controlled committee and do not receive contributions totaling two thousand dollars or more during a calendar year, and do not spend two thousand dollars or more during a calendar year, will still retain the ability to file those on paper with ten clerk. So, um, what the previous ordinance had in it was that we, while we were making, um, changes to the elections code on our municipal code, we thought that we would also recommend repealing chapter two-point-four-two of the municipal code, um, entitled voluntary expenditure ceilings for municipal elections as part of the ordinance due to changes in state law governing campaign contributions. Um, but there were some, uh, typographical and, um, factual errors in the language that we used, so we thought it best to bring the ordinance back with that portion removed, with the intention that we will bring that back to council at a later date. So that we can consider the two items separately and also allow council to have the discussion about its thoughts on, um, campaign expenditures and voluntary expenditure ceilings. So as our public comment, um, Phyllis, Phyllis Metcalf responded, um, earlier during public comment, I just wanted to point out that we took her email and attachment that she did send to council, and it's actually included on the council agenda right now as late correspondence for this item to allow you to have that discussion at this time if you would like, and then give staff direction on what, if, um, if any thoughts on how we should bring that ordinance back to you, let me do bring it back. In the meantime, um, the action for the specific ordinance that we are asking is that the town reconsider, the town council reconsider their vote approving introduction of ordinance one thousand nine and set aside their vote approving its introduction, and then consider introduction of the revised ordinance, um, ordinance number one zero one zero, which if introduced would be brought back to council at a next meeting for a possible adoption. Not sure town, town manager, Todd Kusman, I wanted to discuss anything with respect to Phyllis Metcalf's email, but, um, that, that's what I had to add as far as, as this introduction is considered.
The only thing that I would add, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, would just be, um, you know, as you know, we, we have a gem in Phyllis Metcalf, um, a long history on Brown Act and, um, you know, the, you know, political practices and what's going on with campaigns up and down the state, and she's busy, and so, you know, we do think there is something to be had, to bring something back to you for consideration and a discussion, and, um, you know, luckily, when we have someone like Phyllis to engage her and get some of her feedback, um, as we come back to you on any recommendations or analysis, um, for you to consider. But it would be helpful to have some direction maybe tonight on how strongly you feel about that, um, any thoughts, so we can add that to our, uh, analysis moving forward?
Sure, thank you, Todd, thank you, Rebecca. We'll take questions from council members, um, and we'll start with Charles, I think I saw your hand.
Well, just a disclaimer, I did receive that email, and I did call her cell phone and, and talk more specifically about her concerns. Um, and then she is very knowledgeable, well beyond my capacity to understand, and therefore, I feel like her involvement and, and feedback to the town is valuable and should be considered. Um, but, uh, outside of that, I don't want to contribute more, because there are brighter minds on the subject, so.
Okay, thanks, Charles. Any other questions from council members? Rebecca, was that a hand?
Oh, thank you, Rebecca, and I'll, I'll wait and see if there are any questions from council first before I add, um, some thoughts for discussion.
Leela?
Um, thank you. Um, on the electronic filing, my only question on that is, um, you know, I, I think we should make it as easy as possible for people to, you know, run for elections. So have you thought about any impact that would have on candidates? I assume my inclination is to think it makes it easier, um, because you have that option, but I just wanted to hear from staff if you had any thoughts about that impact.
Ideally, it would make it easier, um. The process is always daunting for all new, uh, applicants to the process, all new candidates. Usually I, I walk them through the filing process. It's, it's split fairly evenly, um, with the number of, of candidates that, that set up controlled, candidate-controlled committees to raise money and, and have those, those higher expenditures versus those that, um, submit to raising and spending less than two thousand dollars, that's the easiest, it's just a single form, and you don't have to file anything else unless you cross that threshold at some point. But yes, I, we would, we would help walk anyone through the process, and there would be an opportunity to, to help.
And you certainly wouldn't see it as. Causing more, creating more, a greater impediment to candidates, it sounds like.
I, I don't think so particularly because they can do it at their leisure, at their own time and not subject to town hall office hours. But again, if there are problems that arise at technological. Such as or questions, staff would be available to help.
Great, thank you. And then on the issue of the campaign restriction on contributions suggested by Phyllis Metcalf. I, I think probably many of us think that the influence of money in, in politics is, is negative and would support, you know, having less of that. I don't know that that's been a particular problem in Cora Madera. But obviously, you know, you, you, maybe you set up things like this so that doesn't become a problem. My only question for staff on that would be, what's the enforcement mechanism? If we're veering away from, you know, what the state is already mandating and what sort of costs that would impose on the town?
That was part of why we recommended separating that out and bring it back to a later date was because I, I wasn't prepared to engage in that portion of the conversation about what that would look like for staff and any costs. Involved. But we will, we will figure that part out.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions from council members? Todd, I was just a little unclear. So what, what type of direction is it that you're looking for tonight? Or what is it that you're looking for a direction on? Is it whether or not to bring? A voluntary expenditure limit back to the council or are you looking for a direction on like the actual policy details?
That's what we just heard. Yeah, I'm looking for, is this something that you'd like us to bring back to you? I think you would. I just want to confirm that before we start this process.
Okay, great. We'll just ask council members to weigh in on that before we take a motion on this item. If there are no other questions from council members right now, we'll go to public comment and I see one hand up. So any members of the public who would like to comment on this item? Please go ahead and raise your hand via Zoom or email public comment at T C M mail dot org and we'll start with Phyllis. And Phyllis, you should be able to unmute whenever you're ready.
I'm switching between two computers, it gets complicated. Okay, I just wanted to mention number one on the agenda for this item. The way this, it is written up under five A is either a typo or it's very confusing. Because number one, the motion to reconsider. And it's ordinance one, zero, zero, nine, that's correct exactly as it's written. Number two is where I see the problem. And I'll wait for Rebecca to get to the page so she'll see what I mean. Are you on the page Rebecca?
Yes, I know the problem that you're going to mention, and I believe it is a typo.
It says motion to set aside councils vote to approve introduction of ordinance one point, one, oh. Except when you read down to it, it shows. It once again brings up number two repeal two, four, two, the voluntary expenditure limits. Either you remove that or the best way to do it would be to take the motion. To. Remove. One, oh, oh, nine, and then take a separate motion to approve the first step of one, oh, one, oh. Otherwise you're right back where you started, another meeting.
Thank you. I think we had it outlined correctly in, in the staff report, but I think.
You did, yeah.
All right, I'm just talking about one meeting on the agenda.
Yeah.
The other question that was asked having to do with what I sent you about having. I mean, there was confusion between the difference between a contribution. And an expenditure which created even more hassle last time. But I think it's important to know that there have been issues in this county. In the past. I don't think we should kind of go over and bring it up again. A lot of people were hurt, a lot of people are angry. And they're in the past. What we're trying to do is make sure it doesn't happen in the future. And. It's possible and the limit that there exists for expenditures is a very fair limit. Cora Madera's campaigns have not gone over that four thousand and nineteen, I think the figure is. Most in the nine cities except for Nevada and San Rafael. The races run between three and five thousand dollars. That would be the normal race. Very low key, neighbor to neighbor, and that's how it should be. Sometimes it isn't. And the reason Nevada and San Rafael are different is they have populations of fifty five to sixty thousand. So I'll be glad to put stuff together for you in the future and review it. I gave you all the backup material. If you want more, just tell me, I know how to research. That's all I spent half my life doing. So any questions, if I could answer a question, I don't know if that's appropriate for the mayor to let me know.
Sure, Phyllis, I don't think that we can do like an, an open Q and A with, with member of the public, but I, but I appreciate that you've. Invited council members to, to call you and provided your cell phone so that we can all follow up with you individually, as I know I'm planning to, to, to learn more deeply about this. So thank you very much.
After November second.
Okay, got it. Well, thank you very much, Phyllis. I do not see any other hands up from members of the public right now. So with that, we will close. Oh, did I, did I already take email public comments? No, I don't think I did. Rebecca, did we get any email public comments on this?
No, we did not receive any email public comments on this, but that does, Phyllis's comment did make me wonder. The next town council meeting is scheduled for November second, so. Perhaps we.
We'll, we'll figure that out.
Yes, but we will definitely take her up on her offer to take advantage of her expertise in this, this area and work on. A policy that makes sense for our town and our council.
Perfect, thank you very much. And I don't see any other hands up, so we will close public comment and bring this item back to the council for discussion and a possible motion. And I would just. Per Todd's request, ask council members when they give comments or thoughts to also let us know just where they stand on having a voluntary campaign expenditure limit come back before the council. Charles?
So as I said, I've also been listening and doing my own research. Ultimately, I feel like accepting the electric filing and moving that forward to finalize that is a good move. I do think, obviously, there's more discussion and education to happen about the other issues. And so I'd like to do that. With staff and the council and any other participants that are knowledgeable and care about that subject. I did look into it based on Lila's discussions. Also, I had that filter when I discussed it. I think ultimately limiting individual donor numbers or at least like, you know. To four hundred, I don't think that that creates a, a ceiling or makes it harder per se. I think it keeps bigger money out of basically. You know, thirty thousand from one person way above what should be a local politic. There's something going on there, right? And so. I think that that's what it's trying to address, but it's, I think sometimes that might be important for politics, like there might be a real issue that needs that. And that's why it's only voluntary. Because I think that number one, I, my understanding is legally they couldn't restrict it unless you were taking government money. But also, you know, it's just kind of an acknowledgement affair, you know, what our playing field is. You can always, you know. Change that, you can go past it, but I think it's, it's just kind of what, you know, that we personally want to play by these rules and acknowledge that. And I'm comfortable also with acknowledging that. So that, that's how I felt with what her comments were and moving forward, you know, entertaining that. And seeing how it, it comes out and, you know, language and ordinance. So I think moving it to a later date is, is a good idea.
Great, okay, thank you Charles. Any other thoughts from council members? Bob?
I think I basically agree with what Charles just said.
Perfect, okay, great, thanks. Fred and Lila, you guys want to weigh in? Fred?
Yeah, so just to have this right, we would have to rescind motion one, oh, oh, nine, approve one, oh, one, oh, right? And then provide direction to staff to move forward with some of Phyllis's suggestions or have staff work with Phyllis to come back to council at, at a future date. Is that correct? Okay, okay, I can support all that, by the way. I'll make it simple.
Great, thank you.
I agree.
Perfect, and I agree as well. So with that, it sounds like we've got unanimous direction there and we are all in support of the item in front of us tonight, so we can go ahead and take a motion on that. Fred?
So I'll make the first motion, which is we go ahead and rescind ordinance number one, oh, oh, nine.
Thank you. So that is a, a motion to reconsider and set aside the council's vote at the meeting of October fifth, twenty twenty one, to approve the introduction of ordinance one, oh, oh, nine.
I'll second.
Great, thank you Charles. Rebecca, could we have a vote, please?
Thank you, that was what I said.
I just read the thing, so.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Morgan?
Yes.
Councilmember Azia?
Yes.
That's Marcus Isa?
Yes.
Rebecca?
Yes, thank you. And now would somebody like to make a motion to waive the first reading and introduce ordinance number ten, ten?
So moved.
Thank you, Lila. Do we have a second? Thank you Bob and Rebecca, whenever you're ready.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Morgan?
Yes.
Councilmember Azia?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Marcus Isa?
Yes.
Rebecca?
Yes, thank you very much. All right, that concludes our public hearing for tonight and brings us to item six, our business items. First business item is six A, discussion and possible adoption of resolution number forty eight, twenty twenty one. Approving amendment number one to the agreement with Hinderlinter de Yamas and Associates, H D L, to include business license tax management and compliance services. And authorizing the town manager to execute the agreement in an amount not to exceed forty five thousand dollars.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I'm impressed that you were able to spell that out. I always, I can never say their name right, so I will call them H D L. So I'm going to represent Daria Carrillo, our finance director tonight, try to do my best. She did a really good job outlining this in the staff report, so I won't repeat what she put down in the staff report word for word. But at a high level. We currently contract with H D L for sales tax consulting services. So they include analysis, reporting, revenue forecasting. Revenue recovery and legislative analysis. And it's been really successful. I've been really impressed with them over the last few years, especially going through COVID as we've talked about in recent months. We're asking that you consider that we amend the contract with them to add this additional business license tax management service, service. And, and really at a high level, if you think about the finance department. You have our finance director in Daria and then you have two financial analysts underneath her. They handle, as she outlines in her discussion. All things payroll, finance, budget. What, what our issue is right now that the business license duties are taking anywhere from forty to sixty percent. Of the time of a full-time employee. And really probably our efficiency and effectiveness is probably about seventy five percent. And so. The duties, it's taking up so much work and time of one of the financial analysts. There's twenty to thirty percent of the job of the finance, financial analyst that is being pushed over to our finance director who we pay really well. Who we have a specific mission for her of what we want her to accomplish. And so stepping back with the recent retirements of both of our financial analysts, we, we just hired Stacy to replace Jana. Lena's our second financial analyst. She's retiring in December. We're starting a recruitment to, to fill her position. We're stepping back and Daria is really like setting the stage for the future of what should the, the department look like and what's the best way to be really efficient in what we do? And one of the things that we've looked at is having our business licenses outsourced with a firm like H D L. We've done some research with our cohorts in the Bay Area. What we found is that, you know, having in-house people oversee business licenses because there's an, there is an enforcement side to it. There's an analysis side to it. Specific to operations management, discovery and audit, so catching those that kind of got through the system. Management support, the software system. So a lot of people have to come in and give us a check. You know, we want to have that software support where they can just do it online, make it easier for people. We also want that, that ability to have the ordinance review. Do we have the right fee schedule? Are, you know, any taxing studies? Are, are we what we want to be? You know, what is everyone else doing and what is the town of Cora Madera want to do? They do that for us. So our recommendation is that we, we try H D L. You know, the first year cost, as she outlines in the fiscal impact of the staff report on page two. We'll see a cost in year one, but we think moving forward with the, with the reduction and the change, going from a classic employee to a pepper employee and filling. Our current analyst position along with some of the, the more efficiency and catching some of, you know, these missed business licenses and revenue that we're missing now. We believe, you know, worst case, this could be a twenty thousand dollar expenditure. Our cohorts have found that they've actually broken even or made money. I'm not recommending this as a moneymaker. I'm not. And so I want to, I want to get into that a little bit with the council as well, just to let you know where staff, our staff's intent is. On that, but what we're looking for is, is those business licenses. We, we, we average about fifteen hundred business licenses a year. You know, that brings in a revenue normally of about six hundred and twenty thousand dollars. This last year, per the staff report, we brought in a revenue of five hundred and fifty two thousand. That's because we, we basically waived business license fees for those smaller businesses that needed the help. And so we just, we, we washed, that was a wash for us. And so. Which I think was the right thing to do. But moving forward, we think that the revenue is about six hundred thousand. We think in year two will probably break even on this cost and really become more efficient operationally within the finance department. And so with that, we're recommending. We're asking that you allow us to, to enter this contract. There was a couple of conversations, a council member Morgan and I have had a really good conversation this morning about this and its equity. And so it goes back to like our ordinances. Like who are we, are we targeting certain groups by doing this? What is our philosophy? And so. Daria touched on it a, a little bit at a high level on her staff report. We're looking for those business licenses, like on, anyone that does business in Cora Madera, you need to have a business license. Period. That's, that's the rule. But we're focused on those storefront businesses that we have. We're focusing on those that have, you know, they're doing contracting work within our, within our community. And so. On some of it, what we're looking at and where we would target would be those that are doing. You know, construction under the table, you know, where it's brought forward by a code enforcement. We would coordinate with H D L on that. We are not, we are not targeting. You know, landscapers or, you know, gardeners, gardeners that are coming, contractors that are coming in to do, you know, business, you know, gardening. Someone's landscape or a house cleaner is coming in. We're not doing that, you know, that it is possible to be brought to our attention by a complaint. And if that was brought to our attention, we would handle that by a case by case. This is really those businesses that are doing really impactful work within the town of Cora Madera. And it's not to be a revenue generator. It's, it's to recover those costs. From a business license standpoint at a high level. Any action that they take from a code enforcement or an enforcement standpoint, they actually bring it to our attention first. And so it's just like sales tax. So. On the sales tax side, as is the business licenses, they would bring something to our attention. This business is doing work in the town of Cora Madera. This is the type of business. This is the revenue that they're bringing in. And this is, this is the amount of money they should be paying for your business license. Do you want us to enforce it? And then Daria and I would say yes. Or if we started to see a trend where we're targeting a certain group, certain group that may be a policy decision for the council. Daria and I would be able to pause it and bring something to the council in immediate time within two weeks to say, hey. Here's a trend that is happening. How would you like us to handle it? Here's our recommendation. So we have full control of what we do, but we're just, this is really provides us an opportunity. To be cost generating, to allow us to be more efficient, you know, operationally as we move forward. And with that, I'll, I'll stop right there and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Great, thank you Todd. Do we have any questions from council members? Charles and then Fred?
So Todd. One way that I've, I've seen like certain expectations on companies licenses and. You know, amenities and stuff for workers or just like in general is the threshold of how many employees they have. Is that one of the criteria that ultimately could be applied in business licenses as far as, you know. Kind of really going after them and expecting that they. kind of really going after them and expecting that they live up to the the standard of the ordinance? Or is that currently something that ultimately is one of the search criterias that this new consultant uses?
Great question. And yes, that's exactly what we'd want them to do. And so we do have criteria for, for instance, for residential home businesses. It's really a flat fee of $225. But then on the commercial side, for, you know, storefronts and other businesses, there's a bunch of, there's a bunch of questions that we put into our analysis of what the fees would ultimately be. And that's based on, you know, the size of your company. There's a lot of criteria there. So that's something we'd want them to analyze and give us a recommendation as well. And I and I think we, you know, we've really, since I've been here, we've never actually kind of looked at that as a town in the last five years. And so I think that this is a good opportunity as well within this contract to do that.
Great, thanks, Charles. Other questions? I've read you had your hand up.
Yeah, so Todd, under this contract, if a business comes into Corder Madara, would they be contacting HDL directly? Or do they go through the town to get to HDL? Or how does that part of it work?
I think they would go to HDL directly, but they would, it would be through the town. So it would just be, it would be a link, we'd give the information. You know, they could always contact town staff as well, and we would push them to HDL and coordinate that. But, you know, they would operate, pay, everything would go through HDL.
Okay. And then HDL, I would assume you can confirm that they have a good reputation. I would say customer service wise, they're customer service oriented. Because again, you know, we want a business coming into Corder Madara not to hassle on the customer service side and give them good service.
That's exactly right. And so I've been really impressed with them and through our cohorts within the Bay Area. Same thing, it goes back to first Charles's question of do will they analyze how our practice is now? And are they the right ones? And is that what we want to do? And the second one, to your point, is what is our philosophy? What what do you want to do? Like, so what is your, what are the types of businesses in your community? And what do you expect from us? Give us that feedback and direction. And again, it's a constant, we check in with them monthly. So the supervisor on the business license side, we act, Daria and I actually meet, would meet with them monthly. They'd give us an overview, we would give them feedback, and we'd make any corrections or pivots as we go forward. So they will follow whatever we expect from them. And there's going to be some, there will be some philosophical decisions we'll have to make. And again, my intent is not to do that at the staff level, it's to bring it to the council with those of a recommendation from staff. But we have full control, Mr. Vice Mayor, on that. And I think that's that's really important with this. Because we're not trying to, we're not trying to generate more money. We're just trying to provide, you know, ensure that we're we're doing everything the way we should be doing it.
Okay. And I don't know if I heard you correct. Can a business pay online for their business license, or do they have to give a physical check?
They'll be able to pay online. They'll be able to do both. They'll have the ability to do both.
Has it now, though? It can only, it's only paid by check, not online?
Yeah, yeah.
Thanks.
Thanks, Fred. Any other questions?
21st century.
Just a quick question about the cost of the contract. Is is the 20,000 per year, I know that's a net cost for the first, no, yeah, so sort of going forward, depending on what what the offsets are. Well, is there a potential event going up if, like, I'm just not sure how it's structured, right? Is it a percentage of what they collect? So therefore, it could actually end up being more than 20 if they collect more, or how does that work?
Yeah, I think you're going to see, just from changing out the analyst position alone, we're going to save about $20,000 annually. So that's the first number. And the second number is, if you look at just right now in numbers, we have 1,500 business licenses. That's about, we're guaranteed to pay them probably 25,000 a year, right? That's where it starts. But where, to your point, you know, it can't exceed 45, so it's somewhere between 25,000 and 45,000. And as we go through the first few years, they're going to catch a whole bunch of businesses that haven't been paying. And business by business, as they realize that, if they find it, it's 35%. So let's just say it's a business, on average, a business license. If you take, you know, 552,000 by 1,500 business licenses, the average business license is about, I think it's about $360,000. I'm sorry, yeah, 300, $360, not 1,000, $360. So what they would do is they would take, if they caught one, they would take 35% of 360. That goes to them, the rest goes to us. But as we get through the first couple of years and get situated, you would see that number reduce. But again, the number can't go-
And they only take that percentage, that 35% of the first year? Is that fair?
Moving forward, always, always moving forward. Because it's all their costs, right? The enforcement, all the work that they have to do behind it.
Gotcha.
Great, thanks, Lila. Any other questions from council members? If not, I've got just one before we take public comment. So Todd, I understand that we're not, we're not setting policy tonight, although it sounds like you may bring back policy questions related to this in the future. I'm just trying to understand. So when we say, you know, when we say that this is a license required for any businesses in Corder Madara, does that require like a legal entity to be set up? So like, for example, I'm, you know, thinking of like an example that I know exists in town. Say like, you know, an individual who cleans houses in Corder Madara, and it's just them cleaning houses, taking checks from people. They don't have like a business set up, they don't have a legal entity. Are they expected to have a business license?
Yes.
Okay.
And so that, yeah, yeah.
Okay, well, I think that that type of thing probably does get to the questions of of equity that Lila raised. So I think that would be definitely worthwhile policy discussion for us in the future. But I realize we're not doing that tonight. So I don't have any other questions. If there are no other questions from council members tonight, then we will go ahead and open this item up for public comments. So any members of the public who'd like to comment on this item can raise their hand via Zoom or email publiccomment@tcmail.org. And Rebecca, did we get any emailed public comments?
Thank you, Mayor Beckman. No, we didn't receive any emails or comments.
Okay, thank you. And I'm not seeing any hands up from the public. So we'll close public comment and bring this back to the council. Todd, did I see your hand?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor. If you do approve this contract, because we will go straight into conversations with HDL on the philosophy. And so I think it is part of the conversation a little bit at a high level. I just want you to know how I've approached, I'm approaching this. And so if I'm off base, that would be helpful to know. And again, I'll bring this right back to you at the next meeting. But it goes back to just like the leaf blower ordinance. I directed my staff at that, if someone is using a leaf blower illegally and it's a landscaper, my expectation is that you cite the resident. I'm not going to cite the landscaper. And and if the landscapers are doing a lot of business in town, I'm going to find ways to help them turn in their gas-powered leaf blowers. And I'm going to, I'm going to give them electric leaf blowers. I'm going to find a way to make that happen. Take on same philosophy to what we're talking about. We are not going to proactively, so my expectation of HDL is you will not proactively target specific groups where I'm worried about equity. And so it's it's those that are, you know, those groups that we're talking about, landscapers and house cleaners. And we're not targeting them. If it's brought to our attention, we're going to have to have a conversation about it. But we're not targeting, I'm not asking them to be proactive. If someone complains and brings it to our attention, we'll talk about it. But I'm not, I don't want them to be focused on that, because it's not our focus. Our focus is on the bigger retail stores, on the construction side. And so that's my direction. And so if I'm off base on that, and I know it's spirit of the law, letter of the law conversation, but that's the way I'm approaching it, because I just think it's the right thing. But if I'm off base, you know, that feedback would be much appreciated.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that. I think the one thing that that is jumping out in my head is just like people, like, for example, you know, I'm sure we've got folks who are like, you know, performing, you know, performing businesses, business actions in Corder Madara by themselves, who like, for example, say they're like, say they're not, you know, citizens of the United States, so they don't have papers to be here. And they're worried that if they, you know, interact with the town to take out a business license, it opens them up for, you know, deportation or something. And obviously, that's not the reality. But but that's, I think, a widespread fear among people who don't have papers. And I, you know, I don't think we would want to penalize people like that who are here contributing to our society, paying their taxes, doing nothing wrong. So anyway, so we'll start with with comments from council members on this item. Charles?
Yeah, so like I said, I think ultimately COVID has also changed working environments a lot. So I think it's good to kind of revisit what what and how we're doing in business licenses and who's affected. But I, my understanding that I want to share with the council is this is really about taking workload off of like a certified CPA who is a higher value town employee that has a pension and stuff, and putting it on to a contract service that ultimately can maintain a maintainable, very straightforward program. And honestly, it's not to increase revenue, it's not to go after anybody. It's really like a break even aspect. And we have a huge amount of commercial and true like corporate business entities that are doing taxable business in the town that have to be monitored and and pay the town to to do that service, right? And so philosophically, I feel like that is the mandate, right? And it was never to go after, you know, people that like, and then that's another one. Outside of number of employees, you could also do thresholds of personal wealth generation, right? If they're like, you know, like we do residents, that's not about whether, you know, what what those kind of protected classes are. That's just about like, you know, it's much harder to spend a certain amount for the for the tax, for this license for someone who's making minimum wage in California versus people that are making a fortune, right? And so basically, to me, to be the most fair and equitable is to look at their their total incomes and understand what the impacts would be on that and whether it's really necessary or not. So that's that's my personal kind of philosophical standpoint on it. Ultimately, you know, I just wanted to share that if the ordinance goes to more letter of the law, because that's how people want to conduct it, that's that's fine, too, because I'm not going to fight against that. But as a community member, I would like the community not to be penalized and kind of punished through this, because that's not why Todd's brought it in front of us. It was really about better management of the town, so.
Great points. Thank you, Charles. Lila?
Thanks. Yeah, no, I agree. From our town's perspective, I think, you know, we're on the same page in terms of what this is and why we're doing this. I think why it jumped out at me is because in the contract, you know, HDL basically has a financial incentive to capture more unregistered businesses. And so I don't know that they share our values in this regard. And whenever you're outsourcing something, you're potentially relinquishing a little bit of control and discretion over what what's happening in terms of enforcement. So that's the reason I brought it up, and I just want to make sure that we are, you know, that Todd and the staff are, you know, sort of monitoring HDL and making sure that they're on the line.
And I don't know that I feel like Todd directly addressed that, like whether that's a something that we would lose control over by initiating the contract or something that ultimately we can set guidelines for for that and basically not use it as an exploitive kind of clause within the contract. If you don't mind addressing that, Todd, that would be helpful for me.
That's an important point, and I have, I thought I, yeah, so, yeah, we have total control. So we, again, we set the expectations upfront, we meet monthly to see in the rears how we're doing. And as so anything that they find, so from to your point, Councilmember Morgan, if someone, if they find something, and they're like, look, they have to actually get our approval. They bring it to our attention, they give us the summary of what it is, and they have to authorize action before they do anything. And so it's a case by case. So if they find 100 business license issues, we, Daria and I will receive 100 notifications asking for authorization to take the next step or direction. And so that's how it's set up. And that's why I really like HDL, because we have full control and we have ownership of that. And then on top of it, we have a monthly meeting of how are we doing? And how can we help them be more efficient, too? They'll give us feedback. Hey, your system's archaic. We need to find a better way or whatever. So I really like that. And I like on the monthly updates as well. If something really jumps out and there's starting to be a trend of something, and I feel I'm uncomfortable making that decision to stop, I will bring it immediately. I'm positioned to bring it to you with facts and stats right away within two weeks. How should I handle this? So I like that.
Also, great, thanks. Very, one other question then for that, Todd, is also, once the business license has been filled and is online, is that a searchable and understandable that HDL provide? Like, you know, is that public resource so that we can see what businesses are being required to get licenses and that type of thing? Just as a-
Yes, we actually have it now on our site. But yes, you'll be able to see every business that has a license in the town of Corder Madara and what that business is. Yes.
Great, thank you. Any other comments, Fred?
Yeah, I'm just wondering if it would be worth it to work with Amy and see if we can add any verbiage into that contract that would kind of spell out what the scope is. And I want to say what the philosophy is for Corder Madara as a town and what we're looking for.
I think it's a staff level, Mr. Vice Mayor. I don't know, I'm happy to actually, if you would like, after I meet with them and we set that expectation to summarize that and bring a report. So it's a, it's a public document, it's memorialized, but really, it's a policy. There's so many things that will come up as we go, and you have to just, you're going to have to constantly adjust policy. I think it's a policy. I don't know if it's a, if it's a legal. I don't know if I would recommend that. I think it's something that I, you know, it's something that your town manager does on a daily basis, respectfully, actually. And I feel like I can, I can do that pretty easily, and I can memorialize that, bring something to you with updates. I think really what would be helpful to council is updates, because we're going to want to, we're going to, you're going to want to know what we're doing and what our philosophy is and how it's going and give direction. And I think we set that by staff policy, like a policy document. Why don't you put that in the contract?
Okay.
This might address Councilmember Casissa's concern as well, the fact that they have to bring it to you before they would enforce a new business that wasn't previously registered. I assume that's in the contract.
Yeah, I'd have to look up the contract, but I know that's their practice.
So if it's not, that might be worth considering. I don't know. I defer, I defer to staff on that.
I think it's something that I can certainly handle in a policy. I'm comfortable, but I'm happy to work with Amy. I think I understand what you're asking. I can work with Amy on that. But it is their practice.
I don't, looking at it, I don't see that in the agreement. But we have the amendment in front. I don't have the full contract. But, you know, if it's council's pleasure to make changes to the contract language, we can do it, really defer to you and to staff on this. I will say, I just took a quick scan of the business license ordinance, and it was enacted in 1969. And it strikes me that it would be time to take a closer look and update that. And we might be able to address some of the concerns raised tonight through that rewrite. I noticed it refers a lot to peddlers and vendors. And we don't see a whole lot of those peddlers around Corder Madara these days. So that that might be an option for addressing some of these concerns as well.
That's amazing. Thank you, Amy. Any other comments from council members? And if not, I'll just say, Todd, I agree completely with your vision of how this is implemented. I was going to say that I would feel a little bit more comfortable if there were, you know, some sort of written policy, whether it's a memo from you, or whether it's something that the council does, or whether it's an update to the, you know, either this this agreement with HDL or our business license ordinance or whatever. Feel a little more comfortable if there was something in writing. But I, but it does, you know, also watch my concerns somewhat that that HDL's practice is to, you know, come back to you guys for approval whenever they're going to take an enforcement action. So, you know, with that said, I'm happy to support the item that's in front of us tonight. I don't know if any other council members want to make further comments, and if not, we could take a motion. Fred?
Yeah, go ahead and make the motion.
Great, thank you. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Great, thank you, Lila. And Rebecca, could we have a vote, please?
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Morgan?
Yes.
Councilmember Azia?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Casissa?
Yes.
Mayor Beckman?
Yes, thank you. That concludes item 6A and brings us to 6B, which is Discussion and Possible Appointment of up to two council members to serve as the town's liaisons to the Marin County Council of Mayors and Council Members Ad Hoc Water Policy Committee.
Thank you, Mayor Beckman and council members. As we were in attendance at the September 29th MCCMC meeting, heard that a proposal was brought to the mayor's select committee to consider forming a- their select committee to consider forming a, um, ad hoc committee on water policy for the county. And that committee is, was proposed by, uh, Senator Ballmer, Kate Collin, and several other, um, Marin council members. And the proposal is that this committee be set up for a period of approximately one year, at which point it would either be disbanded or rolled into the MCCMC Climate Action Committee. But the thought was that this committee would meet regularly every two to three weeks to have roundtable discussions on water policy issues, ongoing water shortages and drought due to climate change, and sharing best practices and ways that cities can work together to encourage, um, water conservation and also see if there are opportunities to affect any policy change. They have a short term list of goals and a long term list of goals that are included on the summary and background that was submitted to MCCMC for consideration. It should be noted that the committee is considered, um, optional, participation is optional. Um, the committee will start meeting October 26th. For any cities that did want to participate and any municipalities that do wish to participate, the formation committee is just asking that, um, councils discuss whether or not they wanted to be involved and consider appointing one or two representatives to represent the city to this committee.
Great, thank you, Rebecca. Do we have any questions from council members? And if not, we'll take public comment on this item. So any members of the public who would like to comment on this item, please go ahead and raise your hand via Zoom or email publiccomment@tcmail.org. And I'll ask Rebecca if we got any emailed public comments on this.
There, there were no emailed public comments received.
Okay, great, thank you. And I don't see any hands up from the public. So we'll close public comment and bring this item back to council for discussion. Um, would anybody, is any, I'll, I'll start with asking, is anybody, uh, like really wanting to serve on this committee? Charles is, okay, great. Um, I'll also just put out there, I, I think this would be a good synergy with my CMSA posting just because, uh, you know, they, they deal with a lot of water issues there. And they're, you know, they, they're kind of working with the county on a, or with NWD on a potential small trial de-stout plant that may or may not come to fruition. Um, so I do see a synergy there. I'd be happy to serve with Charles, but I, I just wanted to check with folks and see if anybody else, um, wants to throw their hat in. And if not, then we can go ahead, um, and appoint, I guess, Charles and myself. Um, I guess let's just do a quick show of hands if everybody's okay with that. Okay, great, excellent. Um, does that work for you, Rebecca?
Uh, yes, sir, I don't think we need that motion on that, just a mayoral appointment.
Perfect, okay, great. So we'll appoint, uh, Charles and myself. And that concludes item 6B, item 6C. Tonight, our last business item is discussion and possible adoption of resolution number 46, 2021, uh, regarding amendments to the town manager's contract. And I will turn it over to-
Thank you. Thank you, Rebecca. Sorry, I was just writing down the action from the last item. I'll, um, I'll start this one off. I don't know if the town manager or the town attorney had anything to add to this. This was, uh, by council policy. This item is being brought back to council for a second review and possible adoption of the resolution to amend the town manager's employment contract and extend its expiration date from December 31st, 2026 to December 31st, 2027. Um, the vote was unanimous at the last meeting to, um, approve this contract. But, uh, it was important to note that after, uh, the finance department staff and, um, I'm really reading their notes on this as they started to enter it into the system with its expected approval at this meeting, staff noticed that there was an error in the calculation of the salary ranges, um, that are included in the fiscal impact section of the staff report. And also, let's get to that page if you wanted to refer to that page. Also listed on page four of the agreement, which is page nine of the PDF, if you're viewing it that way. Um, so the correction was in, in this version of, of the staff report and the attached amendment. A correction was made to the year one through year five base salaries that are defined in the fiscal impact section due to a change in the way in which the base salary is now defined. Um, for section 12 of the agreement, uh, the electronic equipment allowance is now included in the base salary that's effective September 1st, 2021, and is included in subsequent salary increases. So the salary ranges that were reviewed in the last meeting didn't have that extra $1,800 factored into the base salary. It used to be base salary separate and $1,800, um, electronic equipment benefit was, was separate, but it was added into the base salary and the salary ranges should have been calculated based on that and they were not. Um, but that is the only correction to note per what you reviewed at the last meeting. And I can try to take any questions that you might have, if, if you have any.
Great, thank you, Rebecca. Do we have any questions from council members for staff? And if not, we'll go ahead and open this up for public comment. So any members of the public who would like to comment on this item are welcome to raise their hand via Zoom or email publiccomment@tcmail.org. And Rebecca, did we get any emailed public comments for this?
Just a fresh one more time. We did not receive any emailed public comments on this item.
Okay, thank you. And I don't see any hands up from members of the public. So we'll close public comment and bring this item back to council for discussion and a possible motion. Who'd like to start us off? If, Bob, go ahead.
Uh, I will move to approve resolution number 46 slash 2021. And happy to do so. Thrilled to do so. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Fred seconds, thank you, Fred. And I will just say that I, I genuinely feel that Corder Madera residents are getting fantastic bang for their buck with Todd as our town manager. He is an all star and we appreciate all of his work, uh, and his service to our town. And with that, Rebecca, could we have a vote, please?
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Morgan?
Yes.
Councilmember Avasio?
Yes.
Councilmember Casilla?
Yes.
Rebecca?
Yes, thank you very much. That concludes our business items for tonight. Uh, we'll move on to item seven, council reports, and we'll start with the town manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Uh, just one quick update as a follow up from our, um, our workshop with the town council and staff. Um, staff is working, um, quickly to try to hire, um, a building attendant, um, full time so we can have them available to open the community center, um, really seven days a week during our, um, you know, especially during weekends, so we can open up our bathrooms. And so provide additional services to the community, but also the community center available for people to come into, um, and talk to staff as well. So I think we, we kinda kill two birds with one stone and get that service out there available to the community quickly. So we're working fast to, to make that happen. I just wanna let you know.
Great, thank you so much, Todd. We'll move on to council member reports and we'll start with Charles.
Nothing new to report for now.
Alrighty, thank you, sir. Lila?
Thanks, uh, I just have to report that I went to the, uh, well, attended the virtual Marin Clean Energy Annual Retreat. Uh, I think that was last week. Um, we had a lot of presentations on cool new, uh, climate change type stuff that's going on, uh, things to address climate change, including, uh, this technology where they can take waste and turn it into clean fuel or energy. So a lot of cool stuff coming down the pipe and I'm excited to be, um, part of, of MCE and the, and the great stuff that they're doing. Um, I also wanted to say that I'm helping out with a community group that's trying to organize our turkey trot. So everybody should get running shoes ready for Thanksgiving Day. Um, we're still in the initial stages of trying to get a plan and everything, but hopefully, uh, all will go off without a hitch and it will be a great event.
Excellent, thank you very much. Uh, Bob?
Yeah, a homeless committee meeting. And you may remember, we put, uh, I think $43,000 worth of our government funds into a countywide fund from all the towns about two months ago. All the cities matched and the county matched and it ended up accumulating $2 million. Well, the committee has used that to hire three case managers who are now working directly with homeless people to try to get them federal vouchers, which will get them into housing. So we are making progress. Thank you for approving that, but it's being well spent and we're moving forward. Uh, also, in case you had not heard, um, Larkspur is moving ahead with the project Home Key. It's gonna be at the 1251 South Alisio. And it's gonna have to happen by the end of 2022. So they're following our lead. So I wanted to pass that on as well. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Bob, and thanks for your great work on homelessness issues. Fred?
I had nothing to report.
Okay, thank you. And I just have a, a few quick things. We had our first Housing Element Workshop, uh, last week. Um, uh, I, you know, attendance was, was pretty decent. So I'm, I'm hoping that members of the public will continue to participate in those, uh, in that series of workshops going forward. Um, unless my information is wrong, I just wanted to put out there that I believe the, the Corder Madera library has officially reopened. So I know that, that residents have been waiting for that. So that, uh, that's exciting. Um, wanted, uh, to mention that I participated in a Chamber of Commerce board meeting, I think last week. Um, interestingly enough, I don't know how this happened, but like I, I wound up, we were discussing the, the potential roundabout at, at Madera, uh, in great depth. Um, so I just wanted to, to let you guys know that that is something, uh, that I think is still in people's minds. And, and, you know, I'm gonna say maybe as contentious as ever. I think, uh, again, I don't know how the conversation got here, but what I took away from that discussion is that certain members of the Chamber of Commerce Board really do not want a roundabout. You know, I, I, as far as I'm concerned, we don't even have a proposal in front of us right now. So I don't, I don't really know where that came from, but I wanted to make you guys aware of that. And then the last thing I wanted to report on is that, uh, CMSA, Central Marine Sanitation Agency, I, I told you guys, I think probably a couple of months ago now, that they had a failure of one of their digester covers and they had to basically declare state of emergency, uh, and, and, you know, conduct an urgent project to get that cover replaced. Um, there was a little bit of a blip in, in that replacement effort. Um, they, they had the new cover brought in and, uh, some element of it was a little bit defective. So there's been a bit of a setback there. I, I won't go into too much detail. Um, things are still progressing forward there, but, but a slight setback. Nothing that's going to, I think, um, overly, you know, overly impact, uh, CMSA's operations, but I just wanted to let you guys know. And that is all I have to report. Um, and so with that, we'll move on to item eight. Do we have any comments on our draft agenda for the next meeting? Fred?
Yeah, just one thing under, um, I believe under consent calendar ordinance 1009, and that's probably changed to 1010. And then under public hearings, 1010 should probably be changed to 1011.
Good calls, thank you, sir. And then, um, and then it sounds like you guys are gonna work, staff is gonna work with, uh, you know, with Phyllis and, and amongst yourselves and figure out if it makes sense, if we're ready at that next meeting, uh, to bring back the item on voluntary campaign disclosures. Or, you know, if, if it's not at the next meeting, I, I trust you guys will move that forward as is appropriate. Um, excellent, okay. If there are no other comments on our draft agenda, we don't have an SD2 meeting. We're gonna adjourn tonight in, uh, what I think is the universally beloved memory of Pauline Engelmann, Corder Madera's oldest resident, who left us peacefully last week at the age of 113. Um, so she will be dearly missed. I think, you know, everybody that knew her in town loved her and, and we're very sad at her passing. Uh, but we're glad that we, we had so much time with her. So, uh, we're adjourning in Pauline's memory. All right, thank you, everybody. Have a good night.
Thanks.